Thank you for a new day and for many blessings. Forgive us for our sinners. Thank you for every sleep that has been filled here this evening. For each mind and heart that feels the presence of this room, we thank you. Blessed is man who read us to make every moment count. He was the will to encourage to know and do what is right and good and true. Father, we continually pray for our frontline providers and caregivers. Strength in them, guide them, and protect them in their daily life. Praying always for the sick and those who are in need. God, thank you for sending your son to us. I know this time of the year we often forget while we celebrate. We tend to be so caught up in worldly events and things, gift-giving, that we forget the reason. Even as we get caught up in the joy. Please help us keep our eyes on the reason for the sleeping. The birth of a Savior. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you would, may I stand for the pledge, a pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, my nation, our God, and the visible, the liberty and justice for all. I would like to make an approval of the general call that will be done. I'll make a motion. That's second. They're all in favor, say aye. All opposed? On recognition by the mayor, and he personally addressed the commission on his subject, that included all the agenda. Speakers are requested to give their name, address, to the recording clerk for the record. Is come forward to the commission table and speaking. Will it be as brief as possible, only when it will march to four minutes. No official action can be taken, but direction may be given to keep staff. Consent agenda. While we get a discussion of these items, we'll need a, we'll need a yard. There's no objection or a line because the consent agenda may be included in one motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda included at the front with one motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Financial report for November twenty twenty.
So presented already, an audit is filing till, is the time of, time audit is filing till forty four October one through November thirty. You'll notice that the, the cover picture is, um, one of the, the new backheads is to be late last month. Wait, this may be refunded for that by USDA for the seventy thousand of our calls in tomorrow. And we'll probably be, um, the financial statement, as, as you know, that disclosed that he's been working to clean them up, just some, some old accounting errors from the old software. We've heard, there were things where they got, so some of these, uh, any of the, uh, items we've been working during them needed to try to correct and, and add to these further spots. And you're making quite a bit of progress. The auditors are here, they're finishing up the field work this week. And then, um, so far everything seems in order, they're very pleased with our new financial accounting software. Right, and they're pleased with the work that, that we put into the, the funds, like the work that we've put into cleaning up those funds. They, they noticed, they made a comment about how few years they are to audit and they should, they're, they're signing very, very well. The water meter project, all of the residential meters have been installed. So this month we anticipate removing all of the residential meters. They, the, their technicians, the IT technician is here, doing training this week. And we're trying to bring it all together so that they're prepared for building.
What type of training are the ITs doing?
Well, they're working with that, they'll be working with outside crew to, on troubleshooting some of the meter problems, the leaks or, or the wires, because they are electronic now. And they're working with us in the office on how to, so, some of the same stuff, on how to detect leaks, what to do, what's, what the protocol. And with billing, how to pull the information from the meters and then give the billing software. And how, the best way to, you know, how to, how to translate the data, especially to the customer. But we have a lot more information when customers have an issue or questions about their, their bills and, and the reading. Yeah, we have a lot more information to provide. And I think, yeah, that's it, um, for the most part, we're, we're early in the, we're a few months into that this year. And we're working, which allows us a little bit of the dress, any kind of allocation if we were a little more need. And any of the, the, the accounting software, it's, yeah, pretty new on.
Anybody else? Anybody got a motion?
Um, make a motion to approve the financial reporting to the period ending November thirty twenty twenty.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The final reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten, admitting to the section of the city's land development regulation.
This is the, this will be the final reading for the mobile home placement inside the city. And as you, as you recall, in the residential, um, single-family zoning districts, we have, um, some, some tax language that really needed to be cleaned up. We had manufactured homes allowed with certain conditions, but those conditions were not in, in the mobile home industry. Did not apply to mobile homes, they're trying to, they're gonna apply, but they, they really didn't, they didn't apply to many factored homes. But we worked with the, the building inspector of the last year's first open recommendations. He said, this is not typical of cities to allow manufactured homes from where they've been developed. He said you allow ma- modular homes. And, and the, um, the requirements that we were allowing with manufactured homes pertaining to the modular homes. So we, it was a little bit of confusion. So we're, this is cleaning that up, still, we do still allow manufactured homes within the city, but they have to be mobile home zones, like residential single-family slash mobile home zone. We do have those. This is the final reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten, admitting to the section of the city's land development regulation. By title only.
Order number twenty twenty dash ten, the company is here for a reading. Orders are to be made from the board of the city. He's linked on the management of the regulation. Pursued to that speed, L yard, running through a landmark, to continue, creating for investment. Now, the management of the regulation, providing for investment, protection, use of, 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 I don't know, definition. General, by providing, definition, providing for investment, protection, point one, I don't know, definition. General, by adding a definition, third dwelling. Provision for residential, the high-end vector housing by changing the reference. Orders of the state of the country, or of building code, by requiring the upper floor area of residential, high manufactured homes. Permittedly closed by either a three block M wall, that's, or a three block M wall, with structure. Providing for vulnerability, give all orders, house, providing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Drag bowl racing. Remember, we got, uh, notified that, uh, the drag bowl races scheduled for April tenth. We are on the, uh, Southern Outlaw Drag Bowl Association's schedule. Now, COVID and everything else, mayor may not have, at least it sounds. Are they by any chance to give us a run again today for, 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 for?
No. I think with COVID, that's kind of up near you, but, but, um, I reached out to notify all that, of having wires and everybody been, well, prepared and ready to go. Once we get back to the compound.
You think that was it?
It was very.
First time we.
First time we're afraid we.
That was.
They're paper tubes.
And then our, our summer splashdown at Kansas. And then the summer splashdown at Kansas.
Hydrologic condition report. Uh, yes, this is a, uh, report that we received from the Swan River Water Management District, describing light levels in brown water. Just, uh, information only, and the opportunity for you to be aware of what, uh, this could be.
How often do, I mean, does this go up management or?
Yes. Item number six, proposed golf cart ordinance. Uh, this is for discussion. This is the, uh, request from, uh, the commission to talk about safety of golf cart users. Talked about it in the past, and, uh, it's, it's in, to you, which you want to, you're to proceed. It's now in the final ordinance form, until you, uh, say what's the. Just for, for, just for your information, uh, based on, it's a part of the conversation during the last meeting. I spoke to the sheriff's office, and they have one recollection of a accident involving a golf cart. It was a D Y, who put his golf cart in the ditch. It didn't involve, uh, contacting anyone in the neighborhood.
I guess my concern is, and I was already, already brought up about the responsibility of the city. And I don't understand why the city would be liable, because it's like a, a vehicle. You know, we're not, you've got a wreck on the road, it's not our responsibility to liability to the city. But I don't want to, well, it's, well, yeah, but, I mean, if, if, I mean, you have to have designated crossings, right?
Well, well, the designated crossings comes into play if we have the ordinance, and if we need designated crossings on state roads. Uh, now, we can, from what I've read in the statute, uh, we can, we can designate streets where we will allow them. Uh, as for the crossings that most people talk about, they're considered the ones per statute and the rules. And that's controlled by the U T, so from what I can see in the statute, um, we would have to have ordinance in place to be able to look at and see where it would be appropriate to rent crossing, and then whether or not that would authorize. But they definitely blank, uh, unless we have ordinance and that authorization. Because in that process, we designated all the roads where municipal streets were golf carts to be used. God, do you have an answer to, uh, the next question about live building?
Yes, those traffic laws are governed by state statute. So, it is a state statute, governing golf carts. That's what was, uh, the second question is, are you sure? Where you go, they can apply, they can apply, or set forth, you take law, goes to the second question, law, takes the, uh, golf cart to be sealed. Then, uh, they, actions that, that is, in this case, kind of situation where, uh, people are getting a wreck because they're violating, I think, violating state law, you're creating a mechanism, which is forbidden, property, uh, created, uh, by, or, and that. By doing that, uh, we come to the possibility of, of forcing, uh, probably, there's, there's, like, for me, and like, for us, uh, state law, you're for grabbing, like, the, 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 the highway. Get into a practice, a ticket, not ticketing only for violation of the, of the ordinance, predicted violation of the law, of state laws, every beautiful ground to take, golf cart ordinance, that's the last I think law, per, per, uh, but this act, uh, out of, out of, the law, like, why, uh, we, uh, we feel uh, we feel we have it at all times. And that, uh, we, there's, uh, there's, that's, uh, but I don't know.
Just, just out of curiosity, uh, on the occasions when I look at the issue and, and check other municipalities that had the ordinance, uh, what I found was that there were, there was one or more that in their ordinance, they required the owner, operator of the golf cart to have liability insurance. Would that satisfy that?
Uh, that, that, that is something that I see, this ordinance, also permission for them, that, uh, that, that the person operating golf carts will be part of the, of liability, but I, I don't know, it's what the next ordinance, law, activity, like liability, ordinance, basically. If that, that banner, so, uh, I'm aware that, 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 I would not, uh, I, I would not consider that, that's a big, like, for. Or, there's, uh, uh, the violation of the ordinance, uh, possible by, by, the regulatory status, uh, that, that's a violation, so. Of course, I could, of course, but not generally by law, uh, uh, that, that would be requirement under our ordinance. I don't know, the, 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 uh, the violation that, uh, that would be. One of these, first, of this, people may not think that, or, they'll, you have, they think, uh, what may or may not be, uh, uh, the, uh. Uh, that, that's kind of the common question, and this may, that would happen, difficult question to answer, question to cover, in the practice of matters, but, uh, in terms of, uh, the rest of the question is, of liability, that's what, the, the liability, there is, right, as far, the, uh, the liability.
Yeah, well, and I promise this will be my last question. Is, if, if the commission wanted to have a golf cart ordinance, what could we do to satisfy our legal counsel that we have dotted our i's and crossed our t's?
Uh, I think the issue, right, that, I haven't seen, I haven't seen, sure about what that, that, ever, earlier than that one, that, that, right. However, that is legal, that is, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I think, the, the, I think, it's, it's, uh, yes, yes, yes. Whether that means, such, for criteria, for traffic, that, if we matter altogether, I think, that, although I can, I also, I have, point, just what how, 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 uh, uh. Uh, I'm just, uh, here, uh, the reason for traffic, is, uh, the, the, uh, requires, uh, purchase, that, of, uh, the, the, against the, that